Seems like. Let me, let me call the meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. We will begin with, in a moment, with the Committee on Collective Bargaining, the open session portion of it. I'm going to ask trustees to remind you that we are streaming live on video and audio, so please make sure your microphones are on and you're speaking into the mics directly. Trustee Monville, would you please convene the Committee on Collective Bargaining?
I'd be happy to, Chair Lindshide. Happy New Year, everyone. Will the Committee on Collective Bargaining please come to order unless there are any objections? The minutes of the November 2013 meeting will stand as approved. Any objections? So ordered. As you've seen, full agenda, we have six action items for your consideration. First, ratification of the collective bargaining agreement with Bargaining Unit Six, State Employees Trades Council, also known as SETC. Second, ratification of a collective bargaining agreement with Bargaining Unit Eight, Statewide University Police Association, also known as SUPA. Third, ratification of a collective bargaining agreement with Bargaining One, Union of American Physicians and Dentists, UAPD. Fourth, adoption of initial proposals for successor contract negotiations with Bargaining Units Two, Five, Seven, and Nine of the California State University Employees Union, CSUEU. Fifth, adoption of initial proposals for successor contract negotiations with Bargaining Unit Eight, Statewide University Police Association, SUPA. And finally, adoption of initial proposals for successor contract negotiations with Bargaining Unit Ten, the International Operating Engineers, IOE. Vice Chancellor Gail Brooks and Associate Vice Chancellor Swarbrick will present these items. Ms. Brooks.
Thank you, Trustee Monville, and good afternoon or almost good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased to confirm that with the ratification of these three agreements, SETC, SUPA, and the UAPD, Union of American Physicians and Dentists, CSU will have concluded agreements on salary for this fiscal year with all of its labor unions. I would very much like to thank the representatives for each of these groups for the professional and constructive way that they approached the negotiations. The fact that we have been able to negotiate final agreements that were substantially within the parameters approved by the board is a testament to their willingness to work within the realities of fiscal environment in which the CSU continues to operate. In a moment, Associate Vice Chancellor John Swarbrick will give further details for each of those agreements. But before then, I'd like to particularly acknowledge the contribution of Lois Kugelmas, who most recently served as CSUEU's chief negotiator for both the main CSUEU negotiations and in the Unit Thirteen negotiations at CSU Los Angeles, that's the English as a Second Language Group. I understand that Lois will shortly be retiring from the union, and I'd like to take this public opportunity to thank her for her work over many years and extend to her our best wishes for a long and happy retirement.[208.06][208.06][applause] But bargaining in the CSU is a little bit like painting the San Francisco Bay Bridge. No sooner have you finished at one end than it's time to start again at the other. So with that thought in mind, we also have three items on the agenda for the adoption of initial proposals for successor contract negotiations with the California State University Employees Union, the Statewide University Police Association, and the International Union of Operating Engineers based at the California Maritime Academy. Based on conversations with our management and our unions, we know that the central issues will be around salaries and salary structure, and we look forward to continuing many of the conversations that were started in the last round of negotiations on these issues. The fact that we are simultaneously negotiating successor agreements with both CFA and CSUEU provides us with the first opportunity since the onset of the fiscal crises to look at fashioning a compensation strategy focused beyond the immediate year. I will now ask Associate Vice Chancellor John Swarbrick to present further details on each of the six action items. John?
Thank you. So dealing first with the ratifications. The first item is ratification of the tentative agreement with the State Employees Trades Council. The tentative agreement requires a salary increase of 1.34%, which will be effective July the first, 2013. The second item is ratification of the tentative agreement with Bargaining Unit Eight, SUPA. Under this tentative agreement, which was just on salary only for fiscal years 2012, 2013, and 2013, 2014, the details are that there would be no salary increases for fiscal year 2012, 2013. There would be a 4.6% salary increase, which would be effective first of January 2014. There would be increases of $100 per month in the post-intermediate and advanced stipends, and that all bargaining unit members would receive a $600 one-time retention bonus on ratification of this agreement. Finally, we have a tentative agreement with the UAPD whereby all bargaining unit members would receive a 1.34% increase, again retroactive to July the first, 2013. In relation to the agenda item for initial proposals for CSUEU, we've observed during the administration of the current agreement that there have been multiple disputes between the parties over interpretation of some key language and definitions within the agreement. In order to reduce ambiguity and increase clarity, we'll be proposing language changes in multiple sections of the agreement, including Article Three Management Rights, Article Five Union Rights, Article Nine Employee Status, and Article Nineteen Overtime. And as Vice Chancellor Brooks has already indicated, we know that a central issue will be around salary and salary structure, and we look forward to having some constructive conversations around these central and important issues. With Bargaining Unit Eight, the Statewide University Police Association, we are again going to propose language to clarify certain key definitions, in particular around Article Thirteen, hours of work overtime and scheduling, and Article Nineteen, holidays. And like the CSUEU, we know that salary and salary structure issues will also be central to the negotiations. Finally, we are seeking to send out proposals for the International Union of Operating Engineers, a small bargaining unit based at the Maritime Academy. The only issues that we are proposing to raise at this stage are on Articles Twenty-Four Salary and Article Twenty-Five Benefits.
Thank you, John. Trustee Monville, that concludes our reports.
Great. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Brooks. Thank you, John, for, Associate Vice Chancellor Swarbrick, for your report. I think what we'll do now, for the committee's purposes, let's take testimony from our public speakers, and then we can go to taking action items. So with that, we'll start with Pat Gant, followed by Mike Gek. Pat?
Good evening. Mike Gek is not available to speak tonight, so you can go proceed on the list. We are prepared to go to the bargaining table on a full contract for a successor agreement. Like the CSU, we want to focus on compensation, strategy, philosophy, and how to improve salary programs for the members we represent statewide. However, I want to make the trustees aware of some unfinished business from the last negotiations. As you know, we reached an agreement last fall to provide a 1.34% effective July one with a minimum $40 raise. Our agreement held that that would be processed by December one. We have not yet seen the raise in our paychecks. This problem was unintended. The chancellor's office staff had no knowledge of the problem until after we reached agreement, but there was no alternative. The problem is with the controller's office and its ability to process payroll and any changes in payroll and how to do even the simple math on a daily basis. My concern that I bring to you today, as we talk about the future of the CSU, some efficiencies and moving forward, I urge the trustees to consider that the CSU have its own payroll system. So that you are not dependent upon whatever the controller's office can and can't do. So your management you send to the bargaining team doesn't have to look over its shoulder to wonder what is the best program and if the controller can do it. The UC system has its own payroll system, and you would think that for an organization with 44,000 employees statewide, you would be able to do your own payroll system. And I'm not talking about contracting it out. You have the talent and the resources within the system to do it, and the people you have are the people you could hire. And then you could actually manage your payroll system on a daily basis, get accurate information with a punch of a key, and actually make better decisions on payroll and negotiate better compensation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pat. John Orr, followed by Rich McGee.
John Orr, Chair, Bargaining Unit Seven. We recently sent out a bargaining survey to our members, and one of the things that struck me on it was that about 50% of those who responded said that they have either been bullied in the workplace or have witnessed bullying in the workplace. And I feel that that is a problem that we need to deal with here at the CSU. Last contract, we tried to get language added into the contract. I have a guess we will probably try again, but I think this is something, Chancellor, that you have an opportunity to address. Many states have had language put forward for bills to try to deal with this. They've so far failed, but I think as an organization of higher education, I think we can take the opportunity to be a leader in this, in this subject. To give you some examples of things I've seen in the workplace at Cal State Fullerton, there was a chair who called me in to ask me to help him get the department secretary a raise. He wanted to try to get her an in-range progression or get her reclassified, and he asked for my help to help figure out how to get this through the dean and get this through HR. And I came up and met with him, not a bad guy, but as I sat there and he talked, when she would try to talk, he'd tell her she needs to be quiet and listen. And basically during this meeting, he talked to her like she was a child. And I know that he did not feel, that he did not think that his behavior was bullying behavior. In his mind, he's a good guy. He's trying to help her, but he didn't see that the way he communicated to her put her down and hurt her. Another case I'm working on right now, new employee manager goes after everything this person does in a negative way. Popped her for misspelling Merrill Lynch during, while taking notes during a meeting. And it doesn't sound like much, but it builds up. When she gave her evaluation, which was supposed to be a six-month evaluation for a new hire, five pages of mistakes this person's made, from spelling errors to filing in a blue folder instead of a yellow folder, everything, just detail after detail. And when, and I've filed a grievance over this for other issues, but when brought to management, well, this particular person is detail-oriented. How can an employee be successful when everything they do is scrutinized? Everything they do, everything they hand in, well, you did this wrong. I've got an employee now who feels worthless. How can I, how can I be successful? She asked me, how can I be successful here when everything I do is wrong? It doesn't matter how hard I try, because you can't tell me none of you, even during the day-to-day, have not made some mistake. Called somebody John when their name is Jack, misspelled something, pressed the wrong button on your phone when you're trying to dial the number, everything. And this person, this manager, listed everything. That's bullying behavior. And I think, I'm not asking for punishment. I've said this before. It's not about punishment, it's about education, and that's what we're in the business of doing. I'm asking, and there's a couple campuses, I brought it up before, Chico, Long Beach have made some strides. I've heard, I think San Bernardino has made some efforts in this. But I feel like we need to put something out there to educate people, to help them see how their, how the way they communicate affects other people. I say this, and I bring this up too, because sadly, I've been on both sides. I've looked at some of my behavior in the past, and I've seen that I've exhibited bullying behavior. So now I take responsibility for what I do, and I try to pay attention on how my words affect those around me. And I think we can put out something, some type, something to help people see that, whether it's the sexual harassment training, something of that nature, some type of campus or system-wide policy, I don't know, but I'd ask you to look into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Rich McGee, followed by Alessandra Brewer.
Good afternoon. Between the articles proposed by the CSU and the articles we propose to open, the majority of our contract will be up for full bargaining in the next couple of weeks. I ask you to restore hope and confidence of over 14,000 staff members. Every day, someone calls me and says, Rich, I've been with the CSU for 15 years, 20 years. My salary hasn't moved up. I'm now 40% under market rate, and I can't pay my light bill. What am I supposed to do? The compensation system is broken. We know that, but you folks have the power to fix it. All I'm asking is fully fund the compensation package. You'll get 14,000 happy employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Alessandra Brewer, followed by John Tarjan. Thank you. John?
Thank you, Chair Monville. My name is John Tarjan. I'm a faculty member at CSU Bakersfield. I feel somewhat liberated today. I have addressed this board many times in an official capacity, and I felt constrained by the need to ensure that my remarks represented a clear consensus among faculty leaders. Today, my remarks are my own. Nonetheless, I strongly believe the comments I'm here to share today represent the perspective of the vast majority of people in this auditorium, including those of you sitting on the board. It is somewhat unfortunate, however, that I am addressing you during the Committee on Collective Bargaining, because my comments concern the CSU family in general, not just represented employees. During my over 27 years as a part of the CSU family, I have traveled to every campus, have gotten to know presidents and provosts from every campus, and have worked with faculty and student leaders from every campus. I mention this because I feel I've been blessed to get to know the CSU, to appreciate the commitment of its employees, and to understand the tremendous positive impact it has made on the lives of students and community members across the state in a way that few others have had the opportunity to do. I view the CSU's mission as a mission of broad access to a high-quality, affordable education as a sacred trust. In fact, in meeting with alumni leaders just down the hallway from where we sit now, I once stated that the CSU mission has come to take the role of religion in my life. It is for this reason that I have taken the time and expense to travel here today. I fear that the ability of the CSU to fulfill this mission in the future is in peril. I've been dismayed to hear a chancellor state that he got chuckles from prospective presidents when he made compensation offers that were not competitive with what they received for their current, much less responsible positions in other states. When across the state, the CSU loses junior faculty to community colleges because they pay significantly better, how is it possible that community college faculty get paid more on average than our CSU faculty? When we lose faculty to what I consider lesser universities in other states with a lower cost of living pay a higher salaries, when administrative positions result predominantly in the hiring of in-state and usually in-system candidates. It is almost inconceivable that we have reached a state where the only way to keep up with inflation as a CSU employee at any level is to either change jobs or to retire. I've been impressed with the high quality of faculty and administrators who came to Bakersfield during the 1970s. When I have queried them about why they took a chance on Bakersfield, almost to a person they cited competitive salaries. I suspect the same is true throughout the system. Competitive compensation is not sufficient, but it is necessary to attract and retain high-quality employees in the long run. I pray that we are not like the proverbial frogs in the slowly heating water. I believe it is time for an emperor has no clothes moment. As a management professor, trust me when I say that any organization is deluding itself if it feels it can continue to undercompensate its employees in the long term and remain an excellent organization. Markets matter. If we aspire to hire and retain excellent employees on a national, national, or even international level, we must deal with compensation. I have had and continue to have respect, admiration, and even affection for members of this board. You have chosen to serve the state on this board because of your commitment to our mission. However, I truly believe that your service on this board will be at least partially a failure if you do not make significant progress on compensation. Thank you for your time and your service, and for your service to the CSU and to the state of California.
Thank you, John. Nice to see you. Andy Merrifield, followed by Scott Sarheim. Hope I have that correct.
Good evening. My name is Andy Merrifield. I'm a professor at Sonoma State University, and I'm the Chair of the Collective Bargaining Team for the California Faculty Association, and I'm here today actually to introduce a couple of my colleagues. I'm here regularly to talk about our collective bargaining. We are in the process of bargaining so far. It has been much more cordial and moving forward than in the past, and we appreciate that, and we hope that will continue. But, and like all the other speakers, compensation is critically important, as is workload. But I'm here today to introduce a couple of my colleagues, Scott Sarheim from California Maritime Academy, and David Bradfield, who is going to speak on behalf of Leslie Bryant at San Bernardino. What I want to talk about, why I'm introducing Scott and David, is because they represent faculty who do things that we don't often talk about enough. Scott works at the Maritime Academy and participates in the cruise. Leslie is a critical player because she teaches modern dance and is award-winning dance person. And I want you to understand that when we talk about workload and when we talk about compensation, we're not just talking about university professors in the kind of traditional sense that you think of, who are people who do nothing but lecture. So please pay attention to the words of my colleagues and get a further, fuller sense of the complexity of the job that the faculty at this university does. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. My name is Scott Sarheim. I'm a tenured faculty member at California Maritime Academy, and I'm also the chapter president. As many of you know, every summer, the California Maritime Academy conducts training exercises, excuse me, at sea on our training vessel, the Golden Bear. During those exercises, CMA faculty are in charge of approximately 300 cadets on a 24/7 65 continuous day trip. The terms and working conditions of this training cruise are negotiated in a memorandum of understanding that is attached to the California Faculty Association Contract of CBA. I am pleased to announce and report that we have had our first negotiation session this past Thursday, and the discussions were conducted in a very cordial, respectful, and productive manner. While we did not reach any agreements, talks were collaborative in nature with follow-up talks scheduled for this Thursday. We appreciate the CSU's concern for providing our faculty with equitable compensation for the highly technical and potentially hazardous learning and living environment that is the training cruise. The training cruise faculty are fundamental in providing one of the unique opportunities in the CSU for quality education for, excuse me, for maritime, sorry, for CMA students by preparing them for a modern economy. While CMA uses all kinds of modern technology in providing this education, nothing can replace the hands-on experience of working with dedicated faculty on the ship. No amount of simulation can take its place. Training cruise success hinges on not only achieving our academic mission, but also keeping all hands safe in every aspect of daily operations. To accomplish this, excuse me, to accomplish this important mission, we must ensure that there are highly qualified faculty in sufficient numbers to adequately perform and supervise CMA's training objectives. CMA looks forward to bargaining a training cruise MOU that clarifies the expectations of the job and provides us with equitable compensation for every day 24/7 65 that we are away from home. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.[1441.83][1441.83][applause]
I'll be reading the statement of Leslie Bryant from Cal State San Bernardino. Leslie writes, "I am a long-term lecturer in the Theater Arts Department at CSU San Bernardino. I'm here to discuss the recent pushes in the CSU to do more with less and how this affects the learning experiences of students in the arts. Over the past several years, I've noticed a steady increase in the class size of arts courses and the additional service that comes with that. The end result is that students have less time to engage with their professors, which is a huge part of the pedagogy of arts education. Here are a few examples. In theater, all students cast in a show are required to register in a specific course. We have increased the number of students in the casts of shows, which forces the faculty designers and technicians to prepare more work and to work with larger numbers of actors. The more actors and students in technical roles that you have, the less time there is to do individualized coaching and the advising that's required. Also, in order to adequately prepare students for touring performances, those within our state and those out of the country, they must have even more access to the faculty who are directing these shows. Music students are now in larger bands and choruses. They get less individualized rehearsal time with their professors and less access to rehearsal spaces. Seniors who must compete, who must complete a senior recital to graduate are not always able to get the performance spaces they need in the time that they need it. Students in theater and music are required to see current productions in their departments. Hence, the number of students trying to get tickets increases despite the fact that the performance halls still seat the same number of people. If the show sells out and the departments cannot add the additional shows, the students wind up not completing the assignment and receive a lower overall grade in the course. Dance faculty with students packed into classes face safety issues because students have less space in which to move. This lack of adequate space leads to accidents as students crash into each other. Having 30 dance students in a room that holds 30 is quite different than having 50 students with no room to move and learn a dance in a way that reflects industry standards. I personally know of students who have had toes, shins, and femur injury injuries due to a lack of adequate space. Visual art and film students in courses with large numbers lack adequate space or art supplies, technical equipment, and lab space needed to learn their craft. Often, they must share resources as well as the limited time available to meet with their professors for individualized aesthetic assessment. Safety also comes into play with the proximity of students to such items as hot kilns, glass-blowing heat instruments, and welding tools. With more students in a room, the faculty member has to spend more time on safety issues and less on the skills required for the course. Course objectives may be omitted to allow the sharing of the limited resources. As a graduate of Cal State San Bernardino, the experience I had back in the 90s is quite different than what students face today. I had more access to my professors and the required space or materials to create and perform my craft. The CSU has dedicated faculty who are committed to the arts and our students. Today's CSU art students are entitled to the same quality education I experienced years ago. Thank you for your time."[1661.83][1661.83][applause]
Thank you. Nate Greeley, followed by Maura Cotter. Hope I had got that right, Maura.
Hi, I'm Nate Greeley. I'm a student at Cal State LA. I'm a graduate student, or graduate assistant there, and a graduate student, and I'm a member of UAW 4123. I'd also, well, I'm happy with the raise we were able to negotiate in the fall. I'd be even happier if I'd been paid for that raise. It hasn't showed up. I'm told it'll be in March. And we already heard the reasons for that, so I'm not going to go over that, but I do just want to point out how backwards it is. Management has gotten their raises. Student, the student employees are some of the lowest-paid employees around. I wish I was living paycheck to paycheck. I'm living on credit, actually, right? So it doesn't, well, other people will talk, and Rich will talk about what we can do about it, but I just want to point how backwards the whole system seems, that those who need the money the most have to wait the longest to get paid. Those who need it much less don't have to wait around at all. That's all I got.
Hi, my name is Maura Cotter. I am the Recording Secretary of UAW 4123, and I'm also a graduate assistant in the Anthropology Department at Cal State Long Beach. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the administrative nightmare that we're going to be dealing with, getting this back pay. Today, I was speaking with a couple of TAs in the English Department at Long Beach, and, you know, there's nine TAs in the fall semester, but there's only four in the spring. So what that means is these employees that are no longer working are, you know, we're going to have to track them down and figure out if they're actually getting the back pay that they deserve. This is something that is going to cost our This is something that is going to cost our members their hard-earned dollars, as well as it's going to be difficult on your end as well, costing taxpayers money. This is absolutely ridiculous. You know, please just give us the pay that was negotiated in July of 2013, you know, and we'll all be really happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Maura. Rich Anderson?
Rich Anderson, President of UAW Local 4123, representing over 8,000 TAs, grad assistants, and tutors at CSU. And with many other employee units now in bargaining with CSU, I'd like to warn my fellow brothers and sisters, CSU won't pay you on time, and they'll blame the SCO for the delay. But really, the buck stops with the CSU. And if CSU claims that SCO is incompetent to provide the negotiated raises to our members on time, then it's really the CSU who is incompetent. Here's an idea, in-source a system-wide payroll, such as Pat was saying. Then CSU could actually provide raises they agreed to with good faith. Instead, CSU is wasting taxpayer money and forcing us to take this to arbitration, which unfortunately, I'm going to have to look forward to. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you all for your comments. Vice Chancellor Brooks, Chancellor White, I'm sure you're having a sidebar on this. It does seem to make sense to me, if there's something we can do with the Controller's Office, I don't, I'm not going to say that I admit to understand the schedule issue if it was agreed to in July and we're now more than six months out, but that being said, I recognize they have a lot of other responsibilities, I want to be sensitive to that, but I do think certainly there's some reason based to the request of making sure those who need it most get it first, and I don't know if there's anything we can do related to how that gets prioritized in the Controller's Office, but that does seem to be a relevant point and something maybe we could raise with them. I don't --
Thank you. First, let me say I certainly regret the delay. I wish it were otherwise. We have been working almost daily with the State Controller's Office, and when these contracts were negotiated, they were certainly negotiated after July, but retroactive to July, they came on the heels of other kinds of activities that the State Controller's Office was dealing with, and some of our negotiated settlements were different from what they could easily accommodate without having to reprogram a very old, like almost 50-year-old legacy system. So there was a comment made that some management folk have received their increases, and that again is a, it's an artifact of the fact that that could be processed at the campus level. There were few people at each campus, but the others were system-wide and had to be programmed and dealt with by the State Controller's Office. I have to say, I regret that it could not be otherwise, and perhaps I can take just a brief moment and talk about the idea of a payroll system that does not depend upon the State Controller's Office. That's a much larger conversation, but it would require, just for the trustees, it would require legislative change. The State Controller is by legislation our payroll agent, and it would require that we be on a single database, and right now, we have 24 human resource systems, technology I'm talking about, at the different campus, at each campus, that may not have consistent, in fact, don't have consistent definitions, consistent ways of feeding information into one new payroll agent. So we're working on that. We expect in about a year and a half that we will have a single payroll, I'm sorry, single HR system, and that certainly will give us the opportunity to open up this conversation.
Thank you for that. I think, I just, I think moving forward, I'm not an advocate for building a big, new, shiny system, but I am an advocate of making sure we're doing everything we can within the confines of the constraints that we face to make sure our employees get the resources that they deserve and that they bargain for as soon as possible. You know, I have the privilege, Chancellor, of driving every Wednesday morning past a brand-new, shiny facility in Riverside that's going to house the UC's brand-new payroll and fiscal offices, and it occurs to me, as we're expanding the areas of collaboration with the UC and the community colleges, I mean, it seems to me maybe there's an opportunity for us to work with them in that domain. I recognize there's a whole lot of other issues that the state deals with related to the payroll, but it does seem to be something that we owe to our employees to at least look into, to see if there's another way to, you know, ring the bell and resolve the issue. Okay, thank you again to the speakers. We have, for the members of the committee, we have a number of items here that we will try to run through post haste to wrap up. So, do I have a motion to ratify the tentative agreement between the CSU and the State Employee Trades Council, SETC? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor on the committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to ratify the tentative agreement between the CSU and the Statewide University Police Association, SUPA? I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to ratify the tentative agreement between the CSU and the Union of American Physicians and Dentists, UAPD?
Moved.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Do I have a motion to adopt the CSU's initial proposals for successor collective bargaining agreement with the California State University Employees Union, CSUEU?
Moved.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do I have a motion to adopt the CSU's initial proposals for successor collective bargaining agreement with the Statewide University Police Association, SUPA? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So ordered. Do I have a motion to adopt the CSU's initial proposal for successor collective bargaining agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers, IUOE?
Moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the work of the Committee on Collective Bargaining. Thank you for your patience, everyone.
Thank you, Trustee Monville. At this point in the agenda, we are to stand in recess until 8:00 AM tomorrow morning, where we will convene with the Committee on Government Relations. If there's nothing further, we are adjourned, or we are in recess.